Welcome to the July 14, 2022 Parma City Schools Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
All right, can you please monitor the livestream throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
We will do something.
Thank you. Real quick, before we get started with your comments, I do want to give you a little quick, brief appreciation for the call that you made last evening about canceling our summer school and other activities based on a call from the police department. And I'm glad that they found out that it was not very viable. I was flabbergasted when I got that text last night. But I appreciate your diligence and your thoughtfulness to the parents and everybody to get that canceled because it would have been mayhem to otherwise. So, thank you, appreciate it. And we got the information on the board, Dr. Smiley.
Well, I was actually going to start off with a thank you to the Parma Police Department.
All right.
Right in line with your comments, we just live in an era where we really have to take any type of school safety threat very seriously. And they received a call from Macedonian Police late last night, 9:45-ish, and learned of this threat and sort of wished maybe Walton Hills or the Macedonian Police had been a little bit more thorough in their investigation, but Parma Police were certainly very thorough. And actually, interacted with the gentleman who made a pretty vague threat, but a threat about shooting up an elementary school. They went to his house today with the FBI, actually, and they took a forensic psychologist with them and worked through a series of interview questions to determine if this was an actual threat and determined it not to be. So, you know, it was something that our law enforcement partners were really on top of, and we appreciate their collaboration. I think sometimes we're pestering them because we want answers and when can we give it all clear? And they understand our perspective as well, and I think ultimately, we appreciate their communication because, not myself, but Joe Ridgely, Dr. Schneider was involved as well, really in constant communication last night and then through the morning so that we could determine that we were safe to resume. And so, thank you to our law enforcement partners. You are really appreciated, and we're grateful that you're so patient with us and so thorough in your job. That's first. Second, Byers Field has a second in our July movie nights tonight. Phenomenal turnout last week, I have to give, I almost said airy and gamey. Maybe we should do that, just mix it up sometimes. Gary and Amy, a lot of credit, they really, you know, we purchased new sound system for Byers Field, but it really took Gary and Amy some fiddling around and some shaking the trees of the technology department, not ours, but the installers last week to get the sound system to where it needed to be, and it was really first class. We are still working with them to make sure that it is everything that we've paid for and everything we deserve. But phenomenal turnout last week, and Amy really, I thought she had a great idea of doing a Facebook poll to determine what the movies would be, and that really ended up, we showed Encanto. I'm getting better. What did I say? Secondo or something? The turnout was amazing, just amazing. We had to have 700, 800 people there.
Okay, but the best part was the kids dancing in the field because it's a musical. And just these kids, everywhere you look, there were kids dancing, and you were just, it was really cool.
It was great, yeah. I mean, families came and enjoyed, and you know, some teens came and did the teenager thing, walking laps around the track, being too cool for their parents, but that really wasn't a disruption. It was just a great Parma night. Tonight, we have Beauty and the Beast. This weather is really cooperating, and we hope it continues to do so. So, that will be tonight and then the next two Thursdays in July. Also want to mention our listening sessions that we have for friends of Parma Senior High and then friends of Brenwood and Parma Park. These are the next two Tuesdays. It is posted on our website as well and our social media. This is really about trying to determine how we can best honor the past as we move forward into a different era. We know that there are many traditions and prides and physical parts of the buildings that mean quite a bit to the folks who have had experiences there. So, we want to really just listen and try to determine how we best honor those memories and that tradition and that pride. We have talked already with GPD about having a Heritage Hallway. When we are able to build a new campus, and the Heritage Hallway is something they are designing as part of their walkthrough that they should get to us every day. I feel like we had that lunch when they promised us one month, about six weeks ago now. So, hopeful that we will soon have sort of a fly-through and some actual renderings of what we look forward to. But Heritage Hallway will be a piece of it. And these listening sessions are really designed to let people say, this is what we want to see, this is what we want preserved, this is how we can best honor the history and the pride of these schools throughout the last year of their functioning. Next, you know, we often approve things, and it's great to approve them, then we don't really remember when they're actually happening. We have 30 students in Europe right now, and it's really, Carrie McCarthy contacted me through Twitter. So, Rob Seer, Bruce Saban, and Carrie McCarthy are three of our teachers, and they're in Europe right now with 30 of our students. They started in London, they're headed to Normandy, Paris, Cologne, and Berlin. And you can actually follow them at PCSD Europe Trip if you have Instagram, and they're posting pictures constantly, and it's so exciting to see our students. I mean, what a life-defining trip that we have offered, and that these teachers are chaperoning, and these 30 students are enjoying. So, if you have Instagram, again, it's PCSD Europe Trip, I strongly encourage you to follow and see all the great experiences.
And it is.
Quick question, is that students from all three of the current high schools?
Yes.
And they are, some of them are students that graduated in May.
Graduated in May.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Really exciting opportunity, and it'd be great for people to be able to see what they're doing. Then finally, we've had.
Dr. Smiley?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, regarding that, is there a way we could have a little presentation from them in return?
Sure. I think that's a great idea. You don't want me to just hold it up, scroll through their Instagram for you?
No, I want them to come here.
I think that'd be better, yes. Great idea.
Give us a little sort of.
Total no work after that one.
Yes, we will absolutely, we'll absolutely do that. That's a great idea.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, August 4th, we have not messaged this yet, but some talks, some communication with the business meeting today, we should have a conversation in public about House Bill 99 and how that can potentially impact our school district and how we approach school safety. So, we're going to have that work session on August 4th. We will define what time that will be and put together an agenda, but that's definitely something I think we should have some communication about. There's been a lot of question about, are we going to arm people, are we not? Who are we going to arm? And certainly, a lot of strong opinions on that, really all sides. I've gotten a number of emails from parents, actually hoping that we're going to take advantage of that, but we need to really be very deliberate and very open and transparent about how we approach that. So, that will be a work session on August 4th that our public can turn into as well. So, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Communications, Mr. Carpus.
The, Dr. Smiley hit on the two things I was going to talk about. I've just been following some of the students that graduated in May on Instagram, Taylor, the one, my niece, she's been sending pictures and all the different stuff, and it's just really like, to hear a grown-up say, oh yeah, it's life-changing. To hear them like, experience things that they never could have imagined is pretty awesome. So, I cannot wait. That was a brilliant idea to have some of the kids come back in and share. I know, I went to Europe in 2001, and I was, it was before 9/11, and I was a sophomore in high school, and it was game-changing back then for me to see the world. And I saw five different countries in three weeks, and it was just incredible. So, I'm grateful that this trip finally happened. And then, the movie nights, just to see our community come together like that is wonderful. You just see every political spectrum, every walk of life, every colored collar you could wear in our community. They're all there together, sitting on a football field, watching a movie and enjoying, you know, our community. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, that was outstanding, and thank you to Amy and Gary for getting that put together and stuff. That was fabulous. I was very impressed with that turnout. I came up a little bit late, but it was impressive. Enough for me to climb the stairs at Byers Field and take a photo. If it got me to climb stairs, it's pretty impressive, yeah. Anyway, enough about that. It was awesome.
The movie tonight, is it the animated version?
Yeah, the original.
The 1991 version.
We tracked it down. Amy was on it today. They sent the wrong movie at first.
That reminds me, what's the next, what's on the agendas for the next two?
So, the 21st is Back to the Future.
Oh, Back to the Future.
And then, the 28th is Sing 2.
That'll be popular, too.
Fun.
So, on Facebook, we, the two highest polling ones were Encanto and Sing 2, so we put them at the beginning.
Sing 2, sure, strategic. That's awesome.
I suspect a lot more children are singing for Sing 2 as well. We follow them. I think Back to the Future 2 is a great like, tie-in for some of like, our teenagers, and like, it's a little more, it's fun.
I think that'll be the crowd that comes to that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks so much. All right, Mr. Nusio, you got something?
I don't have anything.
You have anything?
Well, there's a lot of good stuff coming up.
All right, so, do we have any amendments tonight? No amendments. At this point, we open the meeting of the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any? No. All right, fly right along. All right, so I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-263, approval of the written record of proceedings from the June 23rd, 2022, regular and special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-263. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Roll call, Mr. Nusio. Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Sorry. Resolution 2022-07-263 has been approved. Which brings us to record on Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-07-264, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022 through 2025 school years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-264. Any questions or comments in the board? Saying none. Roll call, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-264 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-265, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022-2025 school years. It sounds like the same exact thing, it is a different family.
Different family, correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-265. Any questions or comments from the board? And the comment was that it is a different family. All right, anybody else? Nope, saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-265 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-266, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022 to 2024 school years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-266. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-266 has been approved.
Unless any other board members have any comments to make this evening, that will conclude for the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Mr. Ruda, business.
We have no resolutions tonight, so unless anybody is going to discuss, we just skip it.
We can just skip it.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and pass on business tonight. Thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to finance, Mr. Kreis.
Thank you. I would like to move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-267, a resolution declaring the necessity of submitting the question of the issuance of school improvement bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $194,500,000 for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new high school, renovating, rehabilitating, remodeling, constructing, adding to, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving other school district buildings and facilities, and clearing, equipping, and otherwise improving sites for those school district buildings and facilities to the electors of the school district pursuant to Section 133.18 of the Ohio revised code, and requesting related certifications of the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-267. I am so glad I don't have to read all of that when I do these things.
Could have gone from memory.
Can we?
Any questions or comments?
Do you want to explain?
Do you want to explain this?
So, this is saying, asking the county fiscal officer, tell us the value of all the property in the school district and the mileage for putting up $194.5 million bond. This is not saying, we're presenting it as a balance, it's just giving us, it's going to come back at 3.95, but we have to go through the motions and send it to them, and they'll probably get it back to me Friday or Monday, they'll say 3.95. And in two weeks, you will have another resolution saying, do you want to proceed to the balance? That's when you're voting to go to the ballot. This one is just to give the mileage.
So, this is one of the steps we have to follow.
Yep.
For us to even do it, even to consider it on the ballot, rather. All right, thank you. All right, anybody else, comments?
Yep.
Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-267 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-268, approval of electronic vendor audit system.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-268. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-268 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-269, resolution to approve and authorize settlement agreements relating to a real property tax complaint or appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-269. Any questions or comments from the board?
Do you want next?
Yep, so, the House Bill 126 that was passed in April, I believe it was, takes effect 90 days, as most laws do in Ohio, after it's signed by the governor. So, July 21st is the last date we are allowed to do direct settlement with taxpayers. So, we're getting these approved, these agreements, in case, I don't know, if it's people, either someone tries to say it's illegal what we did to these settlements, there's, these are making the contract between us and the taxpayer. So, the county can't come back and say, well, this is not legitimate, they don't, you can't allow the settlement, this is an actual contract. And after July 21st, we can't do any direct settlements with taxpayers, which brings in quite a bit of money for us, but we lost it, we can't do it anymore.
I appreciate all your hard work, getting everything owed to us, that is possibly owed to us, in for our students, so thank you.
Thanks. Roll call. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-269 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-270, approval of the June 2022 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-270. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-270 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-271, ratification of investments.
Second.
Excuse me, sorry. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-271. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-271 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-272, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-272. Any questions or comments from the board?
There's quite a few of up there. What these are, they're really a big one. As you look in the, I think, that's great. So, the first column of the fund, if the fund begins with a 5, it's a federal grant fund. It begins with a 4, it's a state grant fund. And you see all the special costs that are in the second column, ending in 22, which means grant year 22. Our permanent budget will be approved on last weekend of June, appropriated everything for fiscal year '23, which we're in now. These are the leftover appropriations from the grants, so we're just appropriating these so we can close out the grant, spend the money, close out the grant. So, that's what it is. Another $10 million, but it's all grant funds. They're all leftover from last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-722 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-273, approval of requests to transfer funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 2022-07-273. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-273 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-274, approval of Medical Mutual of Ohio Employee Health Insurance Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-274. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-274 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07-275, approval of employee dental insurance program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-275. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes, Resolution 2022-07-275 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss in finance, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Job well done there.
Thank you.
This brings us to legislation. Mrs. Carpus.
I do not have anything tonight, do you?
Nope.
Really? We'll move forward to a work session when we address the school safety issue. Yeah, 100%.
On August 4th.
Pardon me?
On August 4th?
Yes, yes.
But maybe you're going to feel surprised when that.
No. So, unless anybody else answered what I meant, we're good to move on.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Carpus. This brings us to human resources. Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-07-276, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of change in certificated assignments for the 2022-2023 school year, approval of certificated non-condoned leaves of absence, approval of certificated long-term leave of absence in accordance with the provisions of ORC 3309.41, acceptance of certificated resignations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-276. Any questions or comments from the board? Who's resignation?
Oh, we have it over here.
I just don't remember which.
It is.
There's several.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot. Lisa Biannister, Kazzin, lots and lots and lots of them.
One, two, three, yeah, there's a good number of teachers in there. Four, five, six, seven, 10, 11 teachers. Various reasons.
Right. Okay, anybody else have questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Nusio. Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-07-276 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-277, confirmation of certificated administrative appointments, replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-277. Any questions or comments from the board?
You can comment on this if you'd like.
Absolutely. Please.
So this is a pretty difficult position to fill and we're very excited that we were able to track a candidate from Independence, Alexandra. We're just going to call her Ally B. I'm not sure how to pronounce that last name.
It's a lot of letters.
It'll be the second Ally B. in a row in that position because Ally Vasikovsky has returned to the classroom, I believe at Valley Forge. Is that right? Should be at Valley Forge. So this is, this is a really difficult position because it's, you're really responsible for all of the special education compliance pieces of students that are placed outside the district. I shouldn't say placed, although that's a piece of it. But a lot of it's students that attend private schools, but we're still responsible for various aspects of their special education, individual, or IPs, I should say. So we're excited to hire Ally. We think she actually has quite a bit of upward potential and we're happy to welcome her to our administrative family.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Dr. Schneiler, this is just for our students that we are required to service outside of the school district, correct?
Correct.
End it? Okay. Thank you. Just double check it. Role call, Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-07-277 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-07-278, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments, replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-278. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-07-278 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-07-279, approval of long-term leave of absence in accordance with ORC 3309.41.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 2020, uh, adopt Resolution 2022-07-279. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-07-279 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-280, approval of revised Byersfield payroll.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-07-280. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-07-280 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss this evening, this will conclude Human Resources. Mr. Vaughn.
I actually have one question. Do we actively have openings for school bus drivers listed on our, I forget what it's called, Apple Trek? Is there, are we hiring, actively hiring like school bus drivers right now? All right. So anybody watching, we're actively hiring school bus drivers and many other positions. So if you would like to work at our wonderful school district, this is our pitch, to go to Apple Trek and look at the jobs and hopefully come enjoy our wonderful students on a day-to-day basis. I'm done.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that, that we train you.
Yep. Yeah. We train you.
You don't have to already be certificated. We'll train you to do it.
Perfect.
That's all. Now, unless there's something else to discuss for Human Resources, that will conclude for this evening.
I think I just heard all kinds of countless pings and Dr. Schneider.
Oh, yes.
The applications are coming through.
Good job, Alena.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, everybody.
I, yeah.
Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Carpus. Oh, we're in policy, though.
No, we didn't vote for this. Oh, we did vote. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. This was, my bad. I was so confused.
I threw it off. Yeah, we never have comments. Sorry.
Throw me on. It's all right. Not hard to do these days. But all right. This brings us to policies. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-281, approval of the following new policies, Policy 1616, staff dress and grooming, new.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-06-281. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Lucio. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. Yes. Resolution 2022-06-281 has been approved.
All right. I approve, I approve well. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-282, approval of the following revised policies, Policy 3216, staff dress and grooming. Go ahead.
PM, should this be 2000, should this be 07 instead of 6? July of 6.
I'm 6.
I have 07.
It's just your sheet, Mr. Vaughn. It's just your sheet.
Just my sheet? Okay, great. Thank the president.
I paid her to do that.
That's okay.
You're just testing.
Testing. I'm paying attention.
You passed. Yeah. So am I good? Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-07-282, approval of the following revised policies, Policy 3216, staff dress and grooming revised, Policy 4216, staff dress and grooming revised, Policy 6114, cost principal spending, federal[1641.03]